We're ready.
It actually starts live before that.
Okay, we are now live on Facebook.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regularly scheduled mayor and council meeting for Monday, January 25th, 2021. We'll begin with a moment of silence and then we'll lead into the pledge of allegiance, after which I'll ask everyone to mute their mics unless you're presenting. So please join me in a moment of silence. All right, please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I believe we have a flag, so give it a moment to come up. Thank you. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America.
To the republic.
For which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all.
Thank you. So now if you're not speaking, I would ask that you mute your mics to limit the background noise. First things first, I do have a statement that I'd like to read to the public on behalf of the mayor and council of Berlin. On January 20th, 2021, the town of Berlin received notification from the state of Maryland Open Meetings Compliance Board regarding a closed session meeting held on November 16th, 2020. Within the compliance board's opinion, the following violations were identified. One, the pre-meeting notice and agenda requirements of Sections 3-302 and 3-302.1 of the Annotated Code of Maryland. Number two, the requirements for properly closing a session to the public as set forth in Section 3-305D of the Annotated Code of Maryland. Number three, the requirement that closed session discussion be limited to matters within the exception claimed on the closing statement as set forth in Section 3-305C of the Annotated Code of Maryland. And number four, the requirement of closed session summary in the meeting minutes of the next open session per Section 3-306C, number two, of the Annotated Code of Maryland. The mayor and council of the town of Berlin take over meetings and their compliance with the Maryland Open Meetings Act very seriously. We are going to use these findings as an opportunity to enhance our transparency and adapt to the reporting of closed sessions to comply with the guidelines. So many of you may be asking, what does this mean? And if you logged on just a few minutes ago on Facebook at 6:30 for our proposed executive session, you would have seen some of that dialogue taking place between myself and members of the council. So to lay out the process for our closed sessions moving forward, what's going to happen is while we're in this virtual capacity, we'll go live on a platform, whether that's Facebook right now or Zoom later on, at which time you'll hear a statement of closure. That same statement of closure will be published with the meeting packet that goes out the Wednesday before the meeting. And then after the executive session, that same written statement will be updated to include the items that were actually talked about, to make sure that they're complying with those items that we said that we were going to do while we were in closed session, as well as to show you the vote of who voted to go into closed session versus who did not. From there, any objection from the public will be taken. So if that's on Facebook, you could comment in the thread below the meeting. If that's in Zoom, we'll call on you the same way we would for our open meeting, ask you to state your name, your address, and the reason for the objection. If there's merit to the objection, we will be weighing that, and the council will weigh that very heavily before any votes taken to go into closed session. From there, we'll call a vote from the council to see whether they actually want to go into closed session. And just before we close, we'll announce the time that we're going to come back live to you. Then we'll actually close the meeting, have our closed session, and then return. When we're back in person, this isn't going to change, except the only medium is you'll actually be invited in to voice an objection in person, the same way that we've done in the past. So this is kind of new to us with the virtual side of things, but we want to make an effort to comply in the best way possible and do the best that we can for the people we represent. So with that being said, we'll progress into our agenda. Agenda item number one is the approval of the meeting minutes from a regular session of January 11th, 2021.
Let's see, do approve.
So I have a motion by council member Oris. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second by council member Ner. We'll pull a roll call vote. Council member Varel. I think you're muted, but I could read your lips if I heard an "I."
Ah, yes.
Council member Nichols.
Aye.
Council member Purnell.
Aye.
And the meeting minutes from our regular session of January 11th, 2021 passed unanimously with all council members present. Item number two on our agenda is the Berlin Fire Company Quarterly Report, and we're joined by President David Fitzgerald, and we have a PowerPoint presentation from the organization as well.
And Mr. Fitzgerald, or whoever's speaking on your behalf, if you guys could just let me know when to progress in this slideshow, I will get it started for you.
Okay, yes, ma'am. This is David Fitzgerald, President of Berlin Fire Company. I have in the room RJ Road, who's our fire chief, and Billy Brittingham, who's our EMS captain. And just because we're remote, we'll continue with just a single-person presentation, so we can all hear each other. And then if you have a question that we need to field, we'll field that. So this is mayor and council. Thank you again for letting us provide this quarterly update as per our contract and to share with you and the community what we've done for the last quarter, October 1st to December 31st, 2020. This is the Berlin Fire Company presentation. Next slide, please. So our calls for that period of time in-town calls is 37%, and these are our fire and rescue calls. Forty-two and a half percent of the calls for this quarter were in the town limits. The out-of-town, we had 50 calls and 57.5% out-of-town. Next slide, please. And for the fire and rescue, the busiest days were Wednesday and Thursday, followed by Friday and Saturday, busiest times of the day. And again, these are the fire calls four to five in the afternoon. Next slide, please. The response time for the fire company, again, fire and rescue responses, 3.97 minutes. It's a few seconds shy of four minutes. Just as a reminder, we keep on the bottom of this slide, the response time on the station is six minutes for the county response. And what happens then, if the Berlin Fire Company does not respond within six minutes, they start alerting the next appropriate company based on the location of the call. And just to reference back to the matrix report, our criteria for how we fall as a fire company on page 29 is nine minutes or less. So as you can see, we are well within both the county response time and the matrix report response time. So, next slide, please. So now we give our budget overview for fire and rescue. We talked before, our donations have continued. We mail our donations for our fire company in July, right after the fiscal year starts. They are slightly higher than we budgeted, and that's due to, we've had several, unfortunately, we've had several members, current members and past members that have passed away, and we received some very generous memorial donations. So while they are down from previous years, they are slightly higher than what we budgeted, because when we prepared our budget, you know, we were in the middle of COVID, and we knew that the donations would probably be down. Fundraisers, we have had none. No barbecues this summer because we could not get the health department permits, nor did we feel our members should increasingly be exposed to COVID, because we need to make sure they are ready to respond for emergency responses. We've received 100% now of our county funds. Both, they've all been paid, including the pass-through funds, and then per the contract, we're at quarter three, so the town is at 75% per the contract. Next slide, please. So on the expense side, as we mentioned, this is, the first bullet is the same as last quarter. We had unexpected updates from the two computers, which slightly put our office supply and computer account slightly over budget. We have now completed our vehicle maintenance and repair in this quarter in October, and we are very fortunate to report we had no large repairs found, so that keeps that account within budget. However, we did recently find that our building generator has some repairs, and we should be able to stay within our budget in that category, but we do have some repairs. And that is our, so everybody knows what that is, we have a large generator that if we have a power outage, we can power the fire station fully 100% in case the electricity goes out. As mentioned, the last council member, Varel, had asked to make sure we put this in there, and we did receive some CARES fund reimbursement. This was not anything extra. This, we had to provide receipts, so we were reimbursed, so that's fortunate, because now it doesn't put us in an over expenditure category. And for the fire company, that's personal protective equipment, sanitation supplies, so we've been reimbursed for those, so we have no over expenses on our building accounts, et cetera, on that. Next slide, please. Capital budget updates. We've submitted our capital budget per the contract, which has to be in in December. That's submitted to the mayor and council, so I know they have that spoken mayor tendo today, and that'll be coming up for discussion as we move into budget time in the next few months. As we mentioned when we presented back in May, the immediate future will be the breathing apparatus. That is almost a $400,000 replacement item. They are coming to end of life. We will try to apply for some grants. We do know that grants will not cover 100% of our needs, but we will make every attempt to get some grant funding for these breathing apparatus. Again, just to make mention, the way our state aid funds work, it's a formula that's provided by the Maryland Military Department, Maryland Emergency Management. And, you know, since the budget was cut, you know, 26% with fire, we will most likely see that in next year's funding when they run the formula and see that the government funds were reduced, it will reduce our state aid fund with the fire companies. Does anyone have any questions for the fire report before we move to the emergency medical service? Okay. Thank you. Kelsey, if you could move on to the next one. Thank you, ma'am. So this is the Berlin Fire Company Emergency Medical Services for the same period. This is the ambulance side. So the in-town responses, 258 calls, 60.9% out-of-town, 165 calls, 39.1%. Next slide, please. Of those calls, we transported 189 patients, 73.25% of the calls, non-transports. And again, just to refresh memory for the public and mayor and council, non-transports, we could respond out, the patient could refuse, could be a public service call where we're assisting someone, it could be a response, which is automatic for a fire call for the safety of the firefighters responding, safety of the people at a house fire that we, that 911 center may not know that needs being ambulances, and ambulance responds automatically. So that's the non-transports. And then out-of-town is 94 transports and 71 not transported. Next slide, please. For the EMS, Thursday was the busiest day for that quarter, followed by Tuesday, and the busiest hour of the day was 10:00 to 11:00 in the morning. And then we always for the EMS, give you a period of time, the majority for the quarter, the majority of the calls came in between 8:00 AM and 3:00 PM were the busiest hours for EMS. Next slide, please. Our response time average is just a little under a minute. As you know, we have paid staff here. This, as I always quantify, we do our best we can from the 911 center data and our internal data to accurately report this, because we do have second and third run calls that may be a full volunteer response from home. We do pull a random sample of the calls that our career staff runs on to make sure they fall under the 62nd for the staff standard, and that's page 29 again of the matrix report. So we do check on our career staff, make sure they're responding on calls. And again, some of these other calls are second and third calls. Next slide, please. So the revenue, budget highlights for EMS, we mail out our annual donations for EMS in November of every year. They are on budget. They're surprisingly almost to the penny of what we budgeted. We will probably have a few more that come in as somebody realizes they have that on the counter, or they actually go on the ambulance and then realize they did not participate in the donation program. But this is usually pretty well concluded by this time of the year, gets mailed in November. People usually mail it November, December to get their tax write-off, tax deduction. So we're on budget with those. Invoices, we continue to trend down, down about 11%, and that's because, of course, our call volume is down with COVID. So it's important to note, the call value may be down, which is the quantity of calls, number of calls. However, the time that it takes to respond on these calls is greatly extended, because now the ambulances have to be, not that we did not clean and disinfect before, we certainly did, but now there's additional procedures to disinfect. There's also downtime of the staff, many, especially if they've transported a COVID patient, or what we call a PUI person under investigation, because they have certain symptoms. They are changing their clothes, they are showering, just a little more procedures than we've done. Again, we've always cleaned and disinfect, just a few additional procedures for the safety of our staff, our volunteers, and our career staff, as well as safety of the next patient that's got to go on the ambulance, the next patient we come in contact with, or us going home to our families. So I just think that's an important thing to note, that the calls may be down, but the time it takes for a call has increased greatly. All county funds, we've received all those for the operating ambulance replacement, and the town funds, we received 50%, which is right on with the contract. Our next payment for EMS is not due until March. Next slide, please. On the expense highlights, we always try to mention payroll. We're at a little over half. We should be at 50% six months in the year. We're slightly over. We're going to check those numbers, but we believe we're slightly over because some of the overtime and stuff that's taken to staff, the ambulances, where people have to stay over for the length of calls and just covering some of the shifts. All the other accounts are within budget, and the same as the fire side, the EMS side did receive reimbursement for monies that we have expended so far. Thirty-three thousand, five hundred and fifty-seven dollars and 33 cents was reimbursed for what we've expended. And again, that's all receipts and what have you that we've had to turn into the county government to make sure that's justified. Next slide, please. Just on our capital, currently, there's no capital funds being received from the town for ambulance replacements. We have talked about this before, and we'll talk about it again when we start working to our capital and operating budget on what we need to plan ahead. Fortunately, all three of the ambulances have been replaced. We do have a loan payment due on the last ambulance, and we pay that payment out of the county funds. There's in that formula where they provide the grant funds, there's an allotment for ambulances, and that's what we allocate to pay that loan payment. Capital budget's been submitted. FY 2122, one of the discussions we'll have to have is our cardiac monitor replacement. That's one of the, besides the ambulance, that's the second largest expenditure and most important piece of equipment for a life-saving cardiac event that allows our providers to see heart rhythms and it does other things as well. So we'll discuss that further when we get into the capital budget. Council member Varel had also asked to make sure we presented it this quarter, what reduction. So next slide, please. I'm sorry, Kelsey, thank you. Asked us to please present in detail out what operational things were done due to the budget reduction this year. So that was our FY 1920 EMS budget allocation from the town of Berlin. The 2021 grant reduction of 26.42%. We immediately eliminated the person, the fourth person, that makes up our second crew during the daytime. As you saw earlier, our calls are during the day. You know, regardless of COVID, most of our volunteer members do work during the day, or if they work shift work other places, they're sleeping during the day, or they're taking care of children, what have you. So we've had that fourth person. We immediately eliminated that. That was the budget line, and for that, the $56,575. As you see, we still had further cuts to make. So what we have done is when, we have three people that are here normally, paramedic in the EMT, emergency medical technician for the first ambulance, and paramedic for the second ambulance, depending on the volunteer driver, plus these people are all cross-trained, to remind you they're cross-trained in firefighting and rescue, so they are needed also to help staff during fire and rescue emergencies. We have not been filling shifts, so we are down to two people, and today's an example of that during the day, there was only two people here. So by leaving those shifts vacant, we've saved additional $9,300. So as you see, we still have some further reductions that we may need to do. We will continue to evaluate all of our categories. You know, for example, if we're a low budget, and I'm just going to make up something here, fuel or office supplies or whatever, you know, we look at the bottom line, just like you do. We do a line on a budget, but we also look at the bottom number. So we, you know, we're going to always have as many people as we can afford to have here, the three, if we can. But if it comes to a bounce in the budget, you know, we've got to bounce the budget to a little in our means. So we want to add that slide to show you where we are on that, and council member Varel had asked for that. So that concludes our presentation. I did have one other thing, mayor, after you get done, that I just found out about 3:00 this afternoon, but I am done with that report. If you, mayor and council has any questions.
Thank you. Any council questions for the president?
Yes, I do have a question. Dave, this is councilman Ner. I very much appreciate you giving us this update. There's a lot of information to digest here. But what I wanted to ask you, would it be possible to get a written report in advance of our meetings so we could study it a little further? Perhaps it could include a little more detail as to the financials, the numbers of what you're actually budgeting versus what you're down, that kind of stuff?
Yes, we'd be glad to do that, and I apologize for this report. We depend on the 911 center, and I'm not criticizing them. Please don't take this as a criticism to our Department of Emergency Services. They have their people detailed, as I think one of your other council members can attest to, detailed to the COVID testing and vaccination. So we were kind of scrambling to get this report. We try to have this usually to Ms. Jensen and Mr. Fleetwood by Wednesday, so if you have questions, you can call in the evenings or over the weekend. So again, I apologize for that, just being a little slow, and we will try to put some more detail in here. And certainly, as I talked to Mayor Tindall today, we know with COVID, but we think it's very important for at least the new council people who maybe have never been within the fire station to schedule an appointment to come through. We can do it COVID safe. We can all wear masks, social distancing. Our career staff would, you know, separate, and we can do that at any time that those new council members would like, and just be very informal. No, no, because we don't want to violate, have a group up here violate any Open Meetings Act or anything like that with a quorum. But it's going to be important as we get into the capital operating budget that, especially the new people who maybe have never been to the fires, to see what we're talking about. And they would say, oh, yeah, that's that blue thing, or that's that green thing that the guys, the chief showed us, or the ambulance captain showed us, when we start talking about what the different items are. Just make your, I think what you're asking, councilman Ner, is, you know, just be a little more educated about it so you can make good decisions.
That would be correct, yeah.
Hey Dave, this Jeff Fleetwood. I have a question. You mentioned the two COVID grants that you received, the one for a fire and the one for EMS, the reimbursable grants. What other grants have you received, and what other grants have you even applied for any other?
So what we are in the process now, we're looking at our criteria for what they call AFG, Assistant for Firefighter Grant. That's the grant where we're look to see what eligibility we have for the SCBA, the air packs that we talked about, the capital funding, what I was checking on just last week with FEMA and Department of Homeland Security as to any penalty if we would get the grant and not be able to accept it. Because we know the grant won't be for the whole thing, we would have to come up with the other side of it. And, you know, if we got the grant and didn't have enough for the other side, we would have to turn the grant down, and I wouldn't want to be penalized for a future grant. So I was waiting for the answer to that. I think I know the answer, but I want to verify the answer.
And I also want to share that the AMIS grant, that money was received today from Worcester County. Be ready for your pickup by the end of the week, because that is a pass-through.
Yep, yep. And that's the state aid center AMIS grant that's in the fire presentation. That way that formula is developed, it depends on what the county and the municipality, how their funding level, and there's a formula that the state needs to supplement that, what they call a state.
And for the edification of the council, that amount for this year, the check that was received was $10,800.
And Mr. Mayor, I just, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, I just had a question about that, since it was mentioned that formula for state aid, it was on the fire side slide. Is there a formula for the EMS side like that?
No, the state aid funds is for fire and rescue only. The EMS does not get state aid funds.
Okay. And then just the other thing I noticed, per the town contract, 75% of it's paid to the fire, but I thought I saw 50% to the EMS. Is that?
You're correct. There are two separate contracts. We are two separate corporations. We, per the contracts, we are two separate IRS corporations. We're two separate corporations in every entity. So it's two separate contracts, and they are dispersed differently based on the cash flow that we need. And that was agreed upon a couple of years ago. We did a cash flow analysis, and that's how the contracts are developed.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Two questions. You think maybe you can provide us a copy of your PowerPoint presentation so I could further have an opportunity to review it and digest it just a little more?
Yes, what you're watching is not me displaying, that is the town displaying. So yes, yes, sir, the town has a copy.
I can forward that on to the mayor and council.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kelsey.
And doing this presentation on the EMS side, you talked about being over 2% with salaries. Can you put a dollar figure on that, 2%?
Not right in front of me, no, I can't.
But you can.
But I would send the email to Mr. Fleetwood after, as I said during the presentation, I want to verify those numbers with our accountant. And yes, I will send the mayor and council as a group, the dollar figure.
And I just want to echo council member Kerr's request. If we could get what's planned and what is actual, that would help us out quite a bit.
Okay, be glad to.
I had a question. I'm sorry if I missed it, but going back to the original slide, the fire and rescue. Now, I wanted to make sure I'm clear. Jeff, the funds that came through today, you said was the AMIS grant, the $10,000? My question.
$800, yes.
Right. The question to Berlin Fire was, is, was that already allocated? Did you know? I was trying to, when looking at this, I didn't know that that existed, but I was trying to, was that included in your breakdown, or is this additional funds?
Yes, that's in our budget, yes, ma'am. We were expecting that $10,800. We know a year in advance what that, we will know in May what we will get for next year. So that is budgeted funds that we already have allocated. And those are very, and those are very restricted funds. They can only be used for capital items. They cannot be used for operating or maintenance.
And the other question I had was in the EMS section, when you had mentioned the next thing that you were going to look at in your capital budgeting was the heart monitors. When you say, you said that they're close to outdating, if I'm, I don't mean was the heart monitors. When you say, you said that they're close to outdating, I don't mean to misquote you, but are they getting close to their end of life? What's the shelf, what's the lifespan of these things?
Twelve to fifteen years.
And what year are you guys on with this?
They are at the fifteen years. They are out of life now. And if, I don't know if it got passed on, I don't know, because I don't know the distribution. We did submit the capital budget and it has all those dates in it. The capital budget is a five-year budget. It'll show you what's expiring each year for the next five years. So that was turned into Town Hall per the contract back in December.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Do we have any more questions for President Fitzgerald or the fire company?
Mr. Mayor, I just had one other quick thing, if you had just a second.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Relating to the EMS, I just found out this afternoon, if we could, and I will forward this to the mayor and council. I'll be forwarding it to the county commissioners and all elected officials. There was a Senate bill introduced, it's Senate Bill three eighty-nine. It's something that we've asked for years to be introduced, and finally, three senators have introduced it. I've not seen if it's cross-fired in the House yet, but I'll be checking with Delegate Hartman. And that is for the Maryland Medical Assistance Program, Emergency Services reimbursement. When we go on an ambulance call, anywhere, anybody in the state from a nine-one-one ambulance call, we only receive, if they are on Maryland, if the patient is on Maryland Medical Assistance, for years, we have only received one hundred dollars. So this bill has been introduced. I know it's going to have a fiscal note to it at some point. But what it does is increases, not by much, but it authorizes in fiscal year, fiscal year twenty-two, to increase the amount twenty-five dollars each year until this gets to three hundred dollars. Well, again, this is not very much twenty-five dollars, but twenty-five is twenty-five more than we didn't have yesterday. Very well needed because, again, Maryland Medical Assistance person gets transported. And I am going to look, so I'll have the numbers for you, how many of those we do transport a year. But we only get one hundred dollars and we cannot balance bill all the extra, or all the other charges have to be written off as a write-off loss. So we would ask, respectfully ask mayor and council to support this bill. And we'll be making the same request to our local delegates and our county commissioners.
Hey Dave, this is Jeff again. You just hit a button in my head. You talked about balanced bill. Do you have any numbers that can show where you're at as far as collections? I mean, are you at par, behind, or ahead a little bit from years past?
We usually stay about eighty, eighty-two percent. We're one of the highest ones in the two-county area. And that'll all be part of our presentation, yes, and it'll be part of the financial report that we'll submit to the town. Yes, sir, you'll have all those numbers.
And President Fitzgerald, thank you for sharing Senate Bill three eighty-nine with us. If you don't mind, pass along a little bit of information about the calls for service or estimated projections for that so that we can help tie some real numbers to a letter of support if it's favorable for the fire company.
All right. Thank you, Mayor and Council. We thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, agenda item number three is motion of the mayor and council, twenty-twenty-one dash zero-three to extend the tax review schedule. Our finance director Natalie Salee and town administrator Jeff Fleetwood will run point on this.
Natalie, I'll let you run point on this.
So a couple of years ago, mayor and council adopted, and I'm trying to pull it in front of me, a motion to review the tax rate prior to going to the budget process. That would basically help us to look at where we stand, what needs to be done, and help us with better planning for the budget process in general. So going into that budget process, Mayor and Jeff and I were discussing the schedule and come across of the motion that was approved. So dates were created for the tax rate review, and the suggestion was to actually look at the motion and extend the date. So we would go into the general fund discussion and have more time to look at the tax rate, that I'm referring to real estate tax rate.
So everyone's on the same page. I don't know if you're looking at it in your packet. But what Natalie's referring to, back in June of nineteen, the mayor and council passed a resolution. And in that resolution, there are three categories. One says, at or before the second meeting in January, the mayor and council shall review the town's short and long-term financial projections as well as the general fund reserves. That did not happen this year. I hate to give the excuse that it was pandemic-driven, but it was pandemic-driven because Natalie did not have, a lot of the checks had not cleared, for whatever the reason. So that presentation is now not scheduled until the meeting on February eighth.
And the policy also includes a time horizon for the tax rate at number two. If you're looking at the Resolution twenty-nineteen dash zero-five, number two, at or before the second meeting in February, the mayor and council shall set a date for the tax rate policy hearing, public hearing. And that will also be done on February eighth. So we're requesting where the Resolution twenty-nineteen dash zero-five is not, we're not going to be able to meet the compliance with that resolution. We're asking to extend that to the second meeting in February, which our intention is to have the items that we just discussed for the first meeting in February.
So, Mr. Mayor, and the council, the motion before is twenty-twenty-one dash zero-three. It asks for the extension to go no later than February twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-one. So that would run a file of number two in the resolution you're referring to in two thousand nineteen. Has the budget schedule been posted yet?
It will be posted tomorrow.
Okay. But I'm suggesting an amendment to this motion that the extension for the deadline go no later than February eighth, which would be the next meeting we are expected to review general and enterprise funds.
So is there a motion to make it for the next meeting of February eighth?
Well, if we're going to keep this motion that's presented, we're going to have, I feel that we should change the date because it currently says no later than February twenty-eighth. And to meet the deadline stipulated in the original resolution, we should change that date to no later than our next meeting, which is February eighth.
So let's just make sure, Natalie, the compliance with that, do you see any issue with having the reconciliation for December for the enterprise funds and the general fund by the next meeting?
No, it will be presented February eighth.
Okay. So Councilmember Oris, are you making a motion to amend Resolution twenty-twenty-one dash zero-three to extend rather than to February twenty-eighth, but to February eighth?
Yes, it's an amendment to the motion. I don't want to confuse, it's amendment to the motion twenty-twenty-one dash zero-three, yes.
Correct. And do we have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Councilmember Burrell. We'll do a roll call vote. Councilmember Nurr?
Approved.
I, Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember Purnell?
Aye.
So a motion to amend the date on the Motion twenty-twenty-one dash zero-three from February twenty-eighth to February eighth passed. Now unanimously with all five council members present, we will need a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-one dash zero-three.
Move to approve twenty-one. As amended.
As amended.
Second.
And a second by Councilmember Nurr. Councilmember Oris, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Purnell, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Motion twenty-twenty-one dash zero-three passes unanimously, as amended. All right, let's see here. Item number four, referencing the discussion of the Heron Park Committee. I'm going to take the lead on this. I've mentioned to the council members and I've also called just about every member on the Heron Park Committee, starting with the chair. It's no surprise to anyone that the funding that was associated with Heron Park and the money that we had earmarked for some of the projects and development has gone to the chemical spill that occurred. And there's really no funding left in that project to be able to make many of the suggestions come to fruition from the committee. Rather than having the committee continuing to churn their wheels and generate ideas that are very good, but also have very little likelihood of the present moment making it to fruition, I'm asking the council to consider dissolving the Heron Park Committee for the time being. As I called around, I asked the members of the committee, because they've devoted a lot of time and energy to this project, if they would like to change directions and focus on some other things, different boards or commissions that we have throughout town so that as those vacancies become available, we can help get them to be able to serve and continue their service at the town of Berlin just in a different way. One thing I would ask is that if you agree to disband the committee, that we retain the minutes and ideas that have been generated through the committee so the work is not lost. And that when future funding becomes available, and we're looking to do some things on that site, that we can go back to those ideas and hopefully progress right where the committee left off. I would also ask that if the council considers disbanding the committee, that we write a joint letter from the mayor and council thanking them for their service. So that's the item that I have before the council tonight.
Question?
Yes, Councilmember Burrell.
After committee is dissolved, that means that if we would get in a better position, we would have to recreate that committee?
That's correct, and that's, oh, sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead.
That's correct, and that's a good question. And as I met with the chair, Amy Fields, about the committee and the status of the committee as a whole, we would have to go through much of that process currently because several members wanted to step down. They were satisfied with the work that they completed, but they didn't want to serve any longer. Plus, we have too many council members on the committee currently to continue without a quorum. So we would have to go through a process of nominating new people to continue that work if it stayed in. But also, if there became an opportunity where more funding existed, we could re-onboard the committee and set them forward with the previous notes and ideas of the committee that have already been worked upon.
Mr. Mayor, is there a compiled list of the ideas that were generated from this committee that could be shared with the council? I mean, I'd like to have a copy of it.
I believe there are the minutes from the Heron Park Committee and some of the brainstorming sessions that were derived are within those minutes as well. So we could compile those in the process. I would ask that that be done anyway, in an effort to retain those documents. And then most definitely pass those along to the council.
Those minutes are available in the boards and commissions on the town website.
Now, Kelsey, how does that work if we disband the committee? Can we still keep the minutes up there and just put the committee as no longer active or something like that?
Yeah, that can happen.
So the committee was formed by the mayor and council several years ago. So it would, after consulting with the town attorney, Dave Gaskell, it would take a motion and a vote by the council to disband that committee.
I do just want to, if I can just take a moment before we take a vote, just to thank all of our board and committee members. But since this is the topic, I think that we all had a great discussion, great ideas. Just unfortunately, things kind of happened, and then funding is always a concern. So I just want to thank our fellow committee members for their dedication, energy, and their ideas. And I'm just hopeful that we can make it work in some other form in the future.
And Mayor, I'd like to add as well to the citizens of the town, Heron Park, which is, in my view, no different than any of the other parks in town. If a citizen has an observation, a suggestion, by all means, pick up the phone. I would say stop by Town Hall, but unfortunately, we're not doing that. But if they've got a concern, pick up the phone or shoot me an email.
And I hope we'll be back to stopping in soon, as long as we'll remain optimistic, so.
Well, so with that, I guess I'll make the motion to disband the Heron Park Advisory Committee and make it a ad hoc committee as determined by the needs from mayor and council.
So I have a motion by Councilmember Oris to disband the Heron Park Committee and make it ad hoc as needed by the mayor and council at a later date. I need a second.
I second that motion.
And I have a second by Councilmember Nichols. I'm going to call roll. Councilmember Nurr?
Aye.
Councilmember Burrell?
Aye.
Councilmember Purnell?
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously. Thank you. I think it weighs heavily on some of us. Like, we've been a part of it for so long, and we can just hear it in our voices. It's a hard time, but it's not gone forever. So now we'll move on to the town administrators' report. Jeff Fleetwood and.
Mayor and council, I have just one thing. I want to address a concern that I've seen on one of the Facebook pages. But the topic at hand is electric bills and the power cost adjustment, the PCA. So Tim and Natalie, by all means, you chime in if I forget something, please. But what I'd like to do real quick is just explain what is the PCA, what is the power cost adjustment? And to all folks out there that have electricity through the town of Berlin, you get a bill monthly and it lists several charges or line items, however you want to describe that, that add up to the total amount of the bill. In layman's terms, what is a power cost adjustment? Sometimes it's called an energy cost adjustment, or sometimes it's called a fuel cost adjustment. Since the PCA changes from month to month, it's important to realize that it is not due to a change in your electric rates. The PCA line item on your bill passes through cost. The utility itself, the Berlin Electric Utility, is a not-for-profit organization. So that PCA charge is not something that's where there's money, extra money being brought into the town. Again, I remind everyone that the PCA does not change rates. The rates themselves are established by the town's tariff. And the last that they were, those rates were determined was a little over ten years ago. And those rates hold constant. The most recent utility bill, excuse me, electric bill, so everyone knows, there were an extra five days in the billing cycle, and that was due to the holidays. We didn't have cold weather, but we had cooler weather. And another major factor that goes into the PCA is the cost of renewables, which has gone up significantly. So I just want to, that gives you a basic idea of what the PCA is all about. And for anyone out there with a utility bill, whether it be water, sewer, or electricity, if there's a concern, a question, please dial four one oh six four one two seven seven oh, and I will guarantee you will get personalized attention.
And Jeff, I would add that Tim's got some winter savings tips for conserving energy. They should be available on the town electric website of the BerlinMD.gov. And during normal non-COVID times, Tim and the electric department offer different energy audits that can be done. Obviously, not during COVID because. Tim and the Electric Department offer different energy audits that can be done, obviously not during COVID, because that requires closer interaction. But those are things that you can keep on the forefront of your mind. And the Town of Berlin has taken a proactive step to help reduce some of the costs of those renewables, as previously mentioned in a couple of meetings ago, when we took a stance on on some of the bills before the House and Senate of Maryland this year. So thank you for that.
Okay. And the and the last thing I want to say to the council and to the employees and notably Kelsey and Mary. Last week was on a personal note, was not a fun week for me, and I appreciate everyone's thoughts, prayers and support. I'm done.
And any other department reports? Jeff?
And what I'll do, Mayor, is just go around the Hollywood Squares again. Dave Engelhardt?
I have nothing further to add, Jeff, unless there's any questions.
Okay. Natalie?
Just want to bring you shade again. I have forwarded the budget schedule. We've worked on the budget. And it will be uploaded to the website tomorrow. You have received the copy in your email today. Please look over and share any thoughts if you have written that for mayor. We will fall into the schedule, going into the budget workshops, and hopefully we'll go into the full speed of the budget. The January projections, as I planned, did not happen. I have realized that we are receiving the information late as projected. So so many payments were not cleared and some paperwork were not received. I'm not sure if the agency is just time or postal services just to visit sort of the holidays. So going into February 8, I'm planning to give a financial overview for six months, July through December for general fund, more details, but then short overview for utility for enterprise funds, utility funds. That's pretty much I have. We're still in process of going back and forth with Jean Holloway. She got a little bit of busy time and we do too. We should be getting something as a summary, probably, I'm not sure, two, three months, I would say. It's kind of, we haven't determined what's the date. But we're going through the details of the water and sewer reports. That's updated for them. Jean, thank you. That's all I have.
I want to add to something that Natalie said, the the six-month budget to actual or actual to budget, excuse me. It's it it's it's out there. You guys have seen it. It'll be discussed more at the next meeting. But there's nothing that's overly glaring, if you will. So I mean, overall, it's pretty sound. So just so everyone's aware of that. And then what I also want to add, as it relates to the FY22 budget schedule, a little bit different format this year. I I want to highlight for the public. When you when you see this, on the right-hand side, once you see it, it's pretty self-explanatory. It will it will say very clearly for each step of the budget cycle, when public comment is welcome. So please take a look at that. And it's very clear. Okay, Tim?
Hello. Can you hear me okay?
Can.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have just a few things to report on. This week, we're going to be out and about reading meters throughout the area. So just so the customers know that we're out there. Then the big thing I wanted to comment on is we've received approval and authorization from the State Highway Administration to start the pole relocation for the 376 Route 113 project at Flower Street. So starting next Monday, you're going to see us setting new poles on the one side, the Dollar General side of the road. And we've got some other poles we have to replace on the other side. So that'll probably take up to, it could be three to four weeks to complete that project. We got a lot of work to do in that area. So we'll be out and about and you'll see us around there. And then also, I received notification today that we may have to peak generate this coming Saturday. It's supposed to be 18 degrees. So we'll know more by Thursday. We'll have a better idea of whether we're going to run or not on Saturday. And if we do, there'll be a code red alert going out on Thursday to notify everybody to conserve energy. And then that's it. Thank you.
Tim, I have a question. As far as kind of going back to the PCA, I know everything comes down to to usage ultimately, but i- is there a way that folks can figure out a formula or figure out a way to kind of help them in their own personal budgets?
That would be that would be something Natalie could probably report on better than I could as far as the PCA calculation. I know what goes into it, all the different variables, that type of thing. And I think the question is, is is there a way they can know what it's going to be ahead of time to help budget for that or a way of conserving energy?
Yeah, I know. Yeah, while conserving energy obviously is always good, but I mean, I know it fluctuates.
Yeah.
Is there a, like, do we get a notice the 15th of the month of what it's going to be the next month or anything like that?
I think we actually know by the 15th of the month what it's going to be for that month, I believe. Am I correct, Natalie?
Yeah, the calculation is included 90 days for the prior costs and and it's a formula. But we do send it to the Public Service Commission for approval. And once the approval is received, we utilize this rate for the next month. Now, just to mention, the PCA adjustment rate varies by a minute amount. It's not even a penny. It's sometimes like a decimal of a penny. So given that adjustment is possible, but it's driven by a kilowatt, is what's being used by the household. So unless the customer kind of can estimate what we will use next month, the PCA kind of absolves at that point.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, if it's needed, we can provide that if somebody wants, but I don't, it the variances, I can I can give examples. It's 0.3082, and then next month it would be 0.3182. So it's 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 very, very small in variances. Actual factor.
The other thing, Mayor, I'm sorry to cut you off. The other thing for everybody's education, we are not the only electric supplier that has a PCA charge.
That's correct.
It's not unique to Berlin.
And the other important point to stress is that we're not for profit.
That's correct.
And Natalie, correct me if I'm wrong. Do we have a way, say, a customer wants to prevent like a large spike in their in their billing? Do we have a way that they can even out with like a monthly payment type thing? I thought we had something established a little while ago.
Yes, we have what they call monthly budget billing. So the customer have to notify us to enroll. And we would look at their 12 months consumption and 12 months billing. It would give them an estimated amount. And also Melissa, building supervisor, she reviews the accounts as she prints the bills. So if she notices somebody is, for example, on the budget billing, and I'm just going to give example, in pain, a flat $100 a month, but sees incremental increases, she would either send a notice or give a phone call to a customer saying that your budget billing is not pretty much covering what you have. So it's better either to adjust it. So budget billing is an option available for customers to have a fixed amount paid each month. And then that is settled at the end of the year. Let's say you're 12 months and at the end of the year, you overpay that amount by each month. You have an option, either receive a refund or roll over the credit as as you please.
Thank you. Now, what's the best way? What's the best way for a customer to apply for that? Is it online or to call Town Hall?
There is a form that you will need to fill or just give us a call. We will mail the form or, yeah, well, for right now, just a phone call. I was going to say stop by the office, but not.
It's okay. Hopefully, we'll get back to that. But yes, if anybody's interested, that is a program that we have. If you hear of anyone, make sure you direct them to to Town Hall and and there is a program that can assist with that. So thank you.
I have a question for Tim. Tim, I had a call from a concerned citizen that said when the town employee came to read their meter, they weren't recognizable as a town employee. In other words, there was no badging on their coat. They didn't have a ID card. Is that required or?
Do you know if it was a water meter they were reading or electric?
That I don't know.
Okay, because all the electric department employees, we all have uniform shirts that have Town of Berlin on them with the emblem. Has Town of Berlin right on the front of it. And then we also wear jackets that have Berlin Electric on the back, and they have the Berlin emblem on the front of the jacket. So as far as the electric department, we're very recognizable.
In the past, we have discussed that with all the meter readers. And if they receive the machines, we try to remind them so every one of them have to have a badge. So it might have been maybe a cold day that they had a jacket over. A meter reader employee should have a badge hanging or visible. So.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Tim, do me a favor and talk about the effect peak shaving can have on our utility bills.
Oh, that's that's a big factor. When we peak shave, if we we don't have any issues with the engines, you know, not running or something like that, if we hit all five peaks throughout the year with no downtime for, you know, any kind of maintenance issue or that type of thing, the savings to the Town of Berlin is close to $560,000 a year by peak shaving. That includes the maintenance on the engine, that's all calculated into it, the maintenance on the building, the employees' time that they're there running the generators during peak shaving. But what it does, it actually basically during high demand times, our provider provides electricity that we purchase it from. It comes across Delmarva Power's transmission lines. Well, during high demand times, that's when the transmission rates are the highest for transmission congestion. By starting the generators, we're basically shaving the town's demand. So say, say our demand is five megawatts, for example. And I mean, let's say it's eight megawatts and we generated five megawatts. We're only buying three megawatts from the grid at that high peak demand time. So that's the only transmission congestion charges that we pay for. So throughout the year, the winter and summer months, if you hit all the peaks, it can save us close to, you know, a half a million dollars a year.
So 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 me as a customer and us as a community would really need to pay attention to those code red announcements that that we always get and try to do the best we can in each of our homes to conserve.
Yes, sir. That is absolutely correct. Yes.
Thanks, Tim. And and I would further like to state that the that the the streetlights that are on 113 and and Branch Street and 113 and Hudson Street, they seem to be working now. So so if you played any part in that, thank you.
I do. Thank you.
May I make a comment in regards to the oh goodness, I had a brain freeze. What is it? The the red system? What is this thing called? Yes, the code red. I'm sorry, there's noises happening. I can hear something happening behind me and it's gotten me nervous. Anyway, the code red, for those that are not signed up for code red, is this information made accessible or available in another capacity? Because I hear a lot of people saying, code red, I don't know what that is. I'm not receiving. How do I know what's happening?
Well, two things. This is Mary, by the way. Yes, it is available on Facebook, the town website, the public access channel. It goes out on code red, goes out on Constant Contact. Code red is very easy to sign up for. They can go to any of our, any page on our website. And there's an icon in the upper right, I believe, corner. Click on that, follow the instructions and they're good to go.
Thank you, Mary.
Hey, Kelsey?
I also want to make note that the code red system, we sent out that monthly Berlin bulletin, and you can sign up through that bulletin as well. We have a tidbit at the bottom to sign up for that. The only thing I have is that those winter cold weather tips that Tim was discussing, those are coming out in the February Berlin Bulletin. So I have typed something up about that that came from Tim that will go out to whoever has signed up for the Berlin Bulletin. That's all I've got.
Ivy?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I don't have anything to report tonight.
Okay. Mary?
The only thing that I have is that every email address, that would be the BerlinMD.gov email address for all of our users, received or should have received information from me in the last week regarding cybersecurity training. It not only protects the town's account to to be a little more aware at work, but it's also very good information for your your personal lives. It just goes into a lot of stuff about what phishing attempts look like and how you can prevent them and and just ways to be a little more savvy to the the methods that fishers use. So if you did not get that email and and want it, please let me know. We are looking for responses, particularly from the employees by February the 5th. And that's really about it.
Okay, Chief?
Nothing to report.
That's everyone, Mayor.
Thank you. So that concludes our departmental reports. We'll move on to comments from the mayor. I don't have any. So we'll move to comments to the council and we'll move in Hollywood Squares. Councilmember Ner, you're up first.
I just wanted to say thank you to Dave Engelhardt. Earlier this week, I had a lot of questions about the Heron Park property and specifically the building, and he was very thorough and gave me a ton of information, and I very much appreciate it. So thank you, Dave.
Thank you, Councilmember Ner. Councilmember Burrell?
I don't have a thing.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Oris?
Oh, yeah. Excuse me. I just have one thing. I received a call from some concerned residents regarding, it kind of ties in with the advisory committee, but regarding skateboarding, skateboarding in town. And I know it's a tough situation. You know, the parents are at a loss. Kids just want to have fun and be kids, and it's no secret that we've been talking about a skateboard park for years. But ultimately, safety is our number one responsibility, I feel. So I did reach out to, this week, I did reach out to Jeff and Chief and see see how the police department felt about it. And Chief, if you want to chime in or or say anything else about our discussion.
We've definitely had an influx of complaints and activity with the skateboarders, but I think as Councilman Oris had there said, they are kids. And with the pandemic and school being out, we're actually talking about a lot more idle time. Also, wanting to skateboard and actually not having an actual safe place to to do it. And speaking with several parents, because one of our remedies is we confiscate the skateboards and have the parents have to come back to retrieve them with children. And we explain the situation. We explain about the safety itself, the things that are actually happening downtown, and they're not allowed to go ahead and skateboard on state roads or downtown. And again, I think every one of the young people understand the law for sure now. But they still have the question of what can we do and where can we do it? And we've made the commitment. We others said that we're willing to go ahead and and put up funds if they want to go ahead and use Heron Park or any other designated place that someone up there starts to program. They definitely have already other spoke into with a lot of the the activists for skateboarding, and they've actually, they had the use of the park before and had, you know, stop-ins to the park and they had a lot of good activity days. Cold weather's here, so it's going to be a little bit harder to do those things, but we have to go ahead and start looking forward. That means we have to look at grants. It doesn't have to be taxpayer dollars to go ahead and do things. Once we go ahead and have that mindset, we know we'll never do anything. We want to go ahead and reduce taxes and want to do a lot of things. But again, the police department has the first $1,000. We'll go ahead and other ask the businesses downtown to go ahead and help support any program that will go ahead. We'll go ahead and other ask the businesses downtown to go ahead and help support any program that will go ahead and bring forth safe activity for our children. We support the Little League. We other support football, youth football. We, we support all those. So we can do the exact same thing with the skateboard situation. So again, a lot of the parents, as he said, are at a loss, and we've actually talked to a lot of them. So hopefully we can go ahead and keep that as a discussion topic and not shut that part down. Because again, we have a lot of kids are gonna be out there and they're gonna be skateboarding on Atlantic Hotel property off of, you know, the tables downtown and those things, if we don't go ahead and provide them with access to a safe place to, to be.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Councilmember Ors. I, I think that what I'm hearing is it would be possibly helpful for us to identify maybe a, a map or an infographic for some safe places where some skateboarding recreation can be done around town currently on like a drop-in basis. I also recall that we used to have, I think the organization you're talking about, Chief, where they used to use Heron Park for some drop-in skateboarding and set up some ramps. I, I don't know if we still have that contact information, but maybe we can reach back out and see if there's still some demand for, for that service. The, the other thing-
I have that contact, Mayor. We can talk tomorrow.
Yeah, if we could, if we could possibly reach out, I, I don't know if maybe with the colder weather, that's something they want to look at for the spring, but if there's demand for it, and what, the other thing that's helpful is that as we look forward toward the demand for service for any type of skating recreation or biking recreation, having some, some metrics that we can pull from to say, all right, this is the use that we've had on a drop-in service is helpful for us if we're gonna tie public money to it. So those are, those are all good things. Thank you for bringing that up.
Mr. Mayor, I just have a quick question on, on skateboard park. Has the town ever done any studies or does anybody know how much it would cost to actually build a sizable skate park?
That's a good question. I know some of our surrounding communities, like Ocean Pines and Ocean City, have different skate facilities. Even the city of Salisbury, I believe, has some. So those are some metrics that we can possibly pull from them with relative ease.
And, and we've actually done that before. They went to Ocean Pines, they went to Ocean City, and they pulled numbers. But my big thing is don't let the numbers of there scare you. All kids need is, you know, a trash can and a ball, and they can have fun. So understand that concept, that if they have the place to do it and they, they have the support system, they can get a lot of things done.
So I just, real quick, just in closing, I think this is an opportunity, another opportunity for the community to come together to solve the problem. And I think that suggestions obviously are welcome to Town Hall or, or one of us, and hopefully we can get it going. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you. And thank you. Thank you for your comments. Councilmember Nichols?
I have nothing major. Just, I appreciate, I appreciate the information that the chief just provided. It does say a lot to the community to know and to hear. I mean, I know that, I know that you're supportive of the kids and their activities, but for those that are listening, to hear it from you, even though I feel many of them should already know, but to hear that the, the police department is supportive of the kids having a safe location to skate, as well as you are supportive of the other activities that the kids are involved in. So thank you for that, Chief. And also, Jeff, good to see your face.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Purnell?
Yeah, I've, I've got a chime right in there with the chief. Heron Park right now is the best place to direct all those kids to go skateboarding. And I know there's a whole lot of underground local momentum that really wants to see something happen. I'm certainly fully supportive and have been since day one to get a skateboard park in Berlin. To answer Jay's question, it could go anywhere from $50,000 to half a million dollars, depending on what the scope of the work is and what you want to do. But like Chief said, you start off with the, with the basketball and the, and the trash can, and I, you know, you can still have some fun. So a small incremental way to do this somehow, yeah, it's gonna take some money and we're gonna have to determine a space for it, but I think it's definitely necessary. And there's more young kids in town I've ever seen in my life. They could definitely, skateboarding is, it's a good thing, not a crime. It's good, put them in the right spot. It's, it's a great thing to have.
Like the chief said, there's, there's grants out there, and plus you said there is an underground movement for skateboarding, and I believe they're trying to raise funds as well.
They are. It just, we, we somehow need to assist them and get this thing into some cohesive manner to start going in one direction and one spot and try to really get something done.
Absolutely.
And second thing, Jeff, darn glad to see you.
Thank you. All right. I think that concludes the comments from the council. And have we received any comments from the public?
No.
Okay.
Nothing was received.
Okay. Did we receive any comments from the press?
No.
Okay. That brings us to item number 11, and that's adjournment. So we, we need a motion from Councilmember Burrell.
Move to adjourn. I had to unmute myself.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We'll see everybody on February 8. Be safe.
Thanks.
Guys, thank you.